Be attracted to this, and one of them is I see tour buses to come down to the falls. And a tour bus is a pretty big piece of equipment. Needs a lot of turning radius. And in these square block indicators that I just wonder if there's enough safe turning radius to get a tour bus in and out of there.
I can let you know that if you look, remember the three drawings that Walker Macy put together, that were your inspiration drawings. They did look at the radius at the roundabouts when they looked at roundabout opportunities, and those did meet large vehicle turnaround and truck. You know, when it gets down to Third Street and Fourth Street, you know, we have these large right of ways, but until we actually get a better understanding of what kind of development's going to happen on these side streets, they really are placeholders. So there may be a place where you can, these are, you know, Fourth and Water are going to be a looped street system, and a traditional tour bus or trucking vehicle can get through. There may be other ones like Third Street, which may not be, you know, may not be, you know, may be more small truck loading and loading. It's that level of detail, making sure that we're purposely not getting down to that, because that's when that balance of flexibility and certainty, we start to design too certain not having the developer in the room.
Yeah, I guess I would err on the other side, because I don't want to design for the biggest vehicle. I think with pedestrians walking down there, I don't want big giant tour buses spouting out fumes and you're trying to walk down there and go, you know.
True, but fire trucks need to turn around.
Yes, the fire truck doesn't do that.
It'll be big enough for fire trucks.
In terms of priority, your fire apparatus is number one. And with due respect to the tour buses, probably commercial delivery trucks is number two, and then tour buses. But probably as big of a question as the maneuvering is, where are you going to put those tour buses when they're finished delivering their payload?
They're going to go right there.
I can't wait till we have that problem to solve. Honestly, I really can't. Because we, once again, until we really get a better understanding of when the phasing When does interim parking no longer work because development's happening around? These are all questions that we're going to have to answer as we move through the process.
One thought that occurred to me is that in one of Walker Macy's diagrams, they had some parking structure, and it would be really great if that parking structure could take those kinds of issues into account, tour bus maneuvering and parking and things like that.
Yep, those are definitely future negotiations with a developer in any public-private parking garage. I think the goal is that those will happen inside one of these blocks' structures. And we don't know which one it will be yet, because we also don't want to get to that level of detail.
So imagine the tour bus drops them off near Block Five, and those that are able and those that have assistance walk down the street and hit all the shops and.
There you go.
You know.
Spend lots of money.
Thank you. Spend some money, yes.
Is there any movement on the corner gas station property?
Well, that zone mixed-use downtown, so that property owner's in a great position, which means they have their use, which is their contracting business, until such time they no longer have that use, and they want to sell it. And mixed-use downtown zone will let them do pretty much almost everything that the Willamette Falls downtown zone can do. So that's really a future discussion, but it's not zone industrial. It's already been rezoned to mixed-use downtown.
Okay, a couple other points on the zoning is, this site is also subject to, at least parts of this site are also subject to four different zoning overlays, which I think we've got slides for as well, but those four are the Willamette River Greenway overlay, the Natural Resources Overlay District, your GeoHazard overlay, and your Flood Hazard Flood Management Area overlay. So the very simple explanation of what's happening in this zone change in master plan for those overlays is nothing. All those overlays will still be in effect on this property under the new base zoning. It's the base zoning that changes, and the overlays and the protections of those overlays don't really change as part of this. So just to make that point clear. Finally, the sort of wonky mechanical point that is of interest to you that we'll be coming back to is that typically a detailed master plan application would be reviewed as a Type Two by staff. And because this general development plan has less detail than would a typical general development plan, which would be for a, you know, a government facility or a community college or something like that, where you would be more able to say, in the next 20 years, we're going to put a classroom building here. And what you would be doing is just adjusting a little bit over here, a little, we don't have that level of specificity, so we felt that it was necessary both to increase the sort of scrutiny of the quality of the design and the quality of the location and the uses that are being proposed, to bring that back to you again as a part of a Type Three process. So there's a specific request of modification in the master plan that bumps up future developments, the detailed master plan applications from Type Two to Type Three. Now, there is an exception there for things that are so minor that they would meet the minor site plan and design review threshold. So buildings smaller than, I think it's a thousand square feet, or, you know, a patio kind of things outside of a building, that would not be required to go through that Type Three process. We wanted to not make every little project go through, so we've provided an exception. So it's a fairly clunky but nuanced way to bring virtually all the important stuff back to you at a level where the city can have sufficient hearing on big projects, but to let the little things go through the way they would in a normal process.
With a Type Two.
With a Type Two, but still subject to the same standards of the master plan or the conditions of whatever gets applied to this master plan, but just with less process.
I guess my question is, is there a sunset to that or at 90% buildout or something? I mean, it just seems that at a certain point, this place is going to be built out, and having them go to Type Three for, you know, minor, well, it wouldn't be minor, but, you know, they're going to tear down this 25-year-old building to build a new building, but it's going to be the same thing, seems to be excessive.
That's something that someone could come back and ask for a modification to the master plan. So in 10 years, if everyone's tired of going through a Type Three process and want to kick it back down to Type Two, the planning commission can approve an all modification to the master plan.
Okay, but there isn't a, like, at 90% buildout or something like that?
No, once again, I think it's that too specific again.
And why we did this, essentially, you know, right now, all throughout Oregon City for new buildings, we have clear and objective standards. You know, your front facade needs to be 60% transparent. They're very prescriptive. And trying to capture the opportunity and the desires and the aspirations on this property are very difficult to put in a clear and objective standard. So essentially, we're.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the, while this initial buildout's going and there's the first few concept buildings being built, and I don't have a problem with 25 years from now whoever's sitting here still dealing with it. I just thought that might be something that would, you know.
Yeah, if the planning commission gives direction that they are supportive of going back to Type Two, that can definitely be a plan amendment.
I think the other thing to, as long as we're talking about changes, is, can you flip back to the master plan and the framework plan? Is, this is the vision that we developed through the process with talking to the community and seeing what the property, the land kind of said to us that within the floodplain, those are most likely to be the open space zoning. But if owner or developer has a great idea, a crazy idea, a different idea from what this is, they can go to the risk and the effort to try to modify the master plan after it's approved. The easiest route to getting something done with the least amount of friction is to follow the direction that we've got from everybody. But if somebody wants to propose a curved street network that doesn't follow the historic grid, they can come to you and ask. There's a process in the code that's a modification of the master plan to do so, and there's criteria for trying to get that done. So all of this can be modified, undone, but it's just, it's a heavy lift compared to using all the information and advice and direction that we've brought to this process throughout the two years that we've, you know, not me, but collectively been working on it, and just following that direction. So it could happen that in sometime in the next 20 years, somebody comes with a really big change from this, or even a really small change from that. I want to do my park on Block One instead of Block Three or something. I mean, I don't understand why you would make that decision, but I, we want to be humble enough to realize there are things we haven't thought of and allow for a process that gives that kind of wiggle room.
And then you want to go, but the not meeting today's blocking into the 25 years.
Yes, yes. So the other sort of technical modification that we've proposed is, one of the things that written into the master plan is that when you get the general development plan approved, you can freeze all the regulations as of the date that you're, you get, is it submittal or approval of, either way, of the general development plan?
Submittal.
But it's a 20-year plan.
Why would they get it at submittal?
No change in the goalpost once you submit a land use application?
Right, I understand that.
That's just one of the certainties that the master plan provided.
Well, we don't want them to take forever, though.
So this is, so this is the issue. So we were thinking about how frequently minor changes to the code occur, and how there's not just base zoning, but there are four different overlays that would apply to this site, and all those can be tweaked a little, and it's a 20-year timeframe. And what a mess it might be 19 years from now to think, okay, what was the natural resource overlay, you know, restriction on this particular side of the property back in 2014, and how does it? And there didn't seem to be objections to, and we thought it was just a cleaner process to have the regulations that were in effect at the time of the detailed development plan approval be ones that apply. So we've essentially got a request in here that undoes that, frees the regulations as of the date of the submittal of the general development plan, and make it the regulations that are in place at the date of the detailed development plan's submittal. So that's just another tweak that we did for sort of, I guess, process simplification sake.
And it encourages the developer to develop.
Yeah, I mean, if you presume that regulations always get tighter and more restrictive, then you're more likely to want to just do it now, where you can see what things are at and not have to think, you know, things could get tighter in the future. I best should just get this thing in the ground.
I'm coming in with my cane.
So that said, I don't want to get into the specifics of the details of the plan, but I'm happy to do so if anybody has any questions. I just wanted to leave as much time as possible. Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. Because we'll be, the detailed development plan process will be coming back to you, and that we've included a set of policies and design guidelines for future buildings, because what we heard from people over and over was that they wanted substantive, well-designed, attractive buildings, and that that was difficult to virtually impossible to regulate with a set of 60%, you know, transparency, and two feet above the sidewalk shall be, that we had to get more general and principled about it, which makes it a more discretionary process, which also creates a lot of complexity of, is this a beautiful building or is this an ugly building? And that that might require some more design expertise. And Tony said he's ready to talk a little bit about some of the possibilities that we considered of bringing that level of expertise for this district into the process.
You mean, like, having a design advisor of some sort and things like that?
Because, yeah, traditionally, there'd be a, there'd be design review, and there would be a design review commission. And Oregon City doesn't have a design review commission. So we were trying to figure out a way to sort of incorporate some of those lessons into a jurisdiction that's, doesn't have that pre-existing framework for it.
And I think really what we identified was we create a separate design review commission, and however that's made up, it's made up, that acts independently on these reviews. We supplement the planning commission with three extra members with expertise in whether architecture, landscape architecture, to help with that in these areas. And another option could be to have more on the front end, so have assistance from design professionals who would help review the actual application itself and the presentation to the decision-making body. We're really the three that we've kind of identified that would seem to make sense in trying to create one specific for this area. And so that's something we'll continue to talk about as we, as we move through, but I think, you know, obviously, we don't need a decision tonight. This is more to start thinking about, you know, what's the best way to process this and bring the expertise that we need to make some decisions, because we really are going to a very subjective approval process. And there are conversations probably that architects have that, you know, even throw me for a loop. So trying to identify the best way to do that.
I think that sounds reasonable. I don't want to go down the path of some of our neighboring cities who have a separate board, and, you know, it's all subjective, but I think we've got a good framework in place, and as Ben said, I would hope that someone coming into this is going to really look at that, read it, understand it, and want to make their development proposal fit into the overall framework, because in the long run, the community will be a lot happier than someone who comes in and says, well, I'm going to buck the system. People will, in the community, and I talk about not only Oregon City, but the large, are going to get their hackles up about that, because people have spent a lot of time inputting into this and saying, this is what we want. And I would hope that someone in the development community would be very prudent and be cognizant of that.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we have the tools, though, in case that doesn't happen. I mean, unfortunately, you tend to zone for the worst-case scenario.
Exactly.
I mean, trying to be inspirational here.
We're trying to be, do something that's not going to.
Make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where.
You're talking specifically about this zone to implement those.
Correct. This is not citywide, this will be just for this zone.
Okay.
I just also want to point out real quick, you know, we had discussions when we were adopting the transportation system plan, specifically on downtown and some of the congestion, you know, the increased congestion is going to happen over the next 20 years. And so as part of this, the legislature, what was happening was, the state communities all agreed that we wanted density in our regional centers and our town centers, but in order to get those densities that we wanted there, we weren't able to meet the transportation planning role. Multiple jurisdictions weren't able to accomplish that when they looked at the comp plan amendment or the zone changes. And when you look 20 years out, they weren't able to meet the volume over capacity standards, level of service standards. So the legislature passed a new program, and it's a multimodal mixed-use area designation in MMA. And I think you may have recalled, we talked a little bit about this. And essentially, what it does is it allows the comprehensive plan amendment zone change to take place, and in the transportation analysis, you look at, you focus on safety and providing mitigation through alternative, making sure that bike, PED vehicular access is done safely, and that that can continue to happen safely. And during those AM and PM peak hours, that you weren't going to analyze congestion. And it's essentially acknowledging that we're going to accept some higher congestion during those times, because the fixes associated with them are so impractical, practical relative to the cost and what it would do for your community. And so that's what we're utilizing here, is we've been working with the Oregon Department of Transportation and look at implementing a multi, an MMA for this area in order to accomplish that zone change and the comprehensive plan amendment. So just so you're not surprised when you see the MMA boundary that we're requesting and the justification for the comp plan amendment. Isn't your traditional TPR analysis?
Design district that would include things that are involved or related to compact urban form and.
Correct, and then expanding that onto 99E and Main Street, you know, what can we do? What are other projects that can be done that will improve safety along that corridor, will improve access? And it's not just for cars. We're also focusing on bikes and PEDs. And so how do you accomplish that and invest those limited funds that are available into projects that will make it safer or will provide access, instead of saying, oh, we're going to go to a six-lane section in your 2050, I mean, realistically.
Well, you'd be in the river.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's not, you're into a viaduct, you know, that's not going to happen. And I'm not sure the community wants that either.
Well, and I guess, I guess the biggest challenge is getting ODOT to slow that part of the roadway down.
That's never been a challenge.
So real briefly, I was talking to some transportation planners about MMA in this process, and they really, the analogy they gave me, I loved, which was, we had a grid, we had a downtown grid, then a state highway went through our grid, and now we're bringing our grid back. So, you know, the idea is when you're in an MMA area, you are leaving a traditional highway design and speed and expectations.
Nice.
You're going through a downtown area, and as you leave that MMA or design, you then go back to a traditional highway expectation. But you are, you know, you're changing not only your design expectations, your speed expectation, but you just know, when you're in this small section, you will be more congested, and then you're inside a city. I think that's kind of the key point that I'd like to make in the design part.
I think that is really great. The problem is, I have not seen that since we had the wonderful improvements put in on McLaughlin Boulevard. The speed limit through there is 30. I don't see people doing that. They're just trying to get to the exit there to go on 205 as fast as they can.
Well, the key is, as I know, that you can post as many speed limit signs as you want, but if the street is designed for higher-speed traffic, people will do the higher speed. So that is that combination of context-sensitive design for an urban downtown that will bring people to an urban downtown level. And it's another great example, when you're starting to go on Nato Parkway in Portland, you drive up McCadam, you instantly start to tell when you've left a freeway feel and you start going into a urban street feel, and it's that transition. And that's the idea, is MMA, you are in an urban street, and you have different congestion expectations.
I think it also has to do with, too, if we, if we give the appearance that the roadway is narrowing, people will slow down. And I think that'll help once some of those plantings grow up a little bit higher and they start looking like, because I know on Grand Avenue, it's only a 10-lane section, whereas the part on the viaduct, it's an 11 and 1/2 section. And so people tend to drive faster, even though the speed got reduced on that facility. Hard to tell.
Yeah, you can put as many speed limit signs as you want until you redesign it for an urban.
Yeah, it has to be designed so that it's, has a narrow appearance.
So we're getting close to the end of our time. Is there anything you want to just kind of wrap things up with?
No, I'd wrap it up, just to finalize the MMA discussion, there's a image of the boundary, I think it's on page 112, but the new MMA will include both the Willamette Falls District and the existing, or most of the existing downtown. So that's part of what will be coming, is part of the application, what we're asking for is to create this new MMA boundary around the downtown and the new part of downtown.
Say what that means again, because otherwise it's the McLaughlin Memorial Stadium or mixed martial arts.
It's a mouthful, it's multimodal mixed-use area.
Okay.
So the first multimodal is just one M, because it's hyphenated, it's a multimodal mixed.
MM-MMA.
Use area.
M3A.
It's not mixed martial arts with ODOT.
Hey, all right, we're going to do takedown.
Well, that's something we can do in Section 3.
A takedown?
Put the rings up and.
So what I'd, what I'd like, as we kind of move down the dais, either questions you would like to pass on for George Kramer about historic preservation, either questions about the process or just background, and then also back to us, and what items are. the process or just background, and then also back to us, and what items are you tracking that you want us to pay particular attention to as we move forward in this process? And whoever's ready to start?
I got two things. One is I would like to see the flexibility include a possibility of the public owning that piece of property. Because ultimately, I think that's what's going to happen. I think the state is going to jump in and say, enough is enough. We've waited long enough, you know? And because I don't think there's the enterprise out there backed up by the money in this economy to take the chance to develop that. I think it's just too problematic. The other thing is, let's say, for instance, either the state or the private enterprise comes in here and says, hey, folks, I've got the money behind me, okay, probably all foreign, and I've got a master plan here, doesn't, doesn't come anywhere near your grid system, but I'm going to build this out over a 10, 15-year period in a master plan. He brings in a model. It's a planned unit development, really, is what it is, with mixed use, including the public open space. Do we have, can we accommodate that type of an application with this zoning to allow for that to come before this board for approval?
Well, I, I think the goal is you can. The problem is if someone is proposing something so different than this master plan, then they're going outside of a two-year giant public engagement process. And there's always a lot of danger to that, that I can't control. And so we were trying our best to implement what we heard that provides the most flexibility and certainty. But if someone comes in with a totally different design and they can make their case to you that they think that meets the four core values and it meets what they heard from the community, it just kind of came out in a different way, great. If they can't, then that's a, that's a discussion this community's going to have to make, if something's coming in much different than what we went through.
Because right now, I see the development plan being incremental, one step at a time, this type of thing, in terms of proposals. But a master plan submitted by the applicant would say, this is what I'm talking about, you know?
They could certainly, they could certainly do that. Our, our master plan process is very similar to a planning unit development process. Where they could come in and say, you know, here's, here's, here's my plan to take it down, and here's the seven phases to do it, but I'm addressing this all upfront at once.
At least you know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
We would, we would encourage that.
And that's what people want. They want to know what you're talking about. Show me.
Yeah, and we have to plan for that opportunity. We have to plan for the first one you talked about. And the goal is we have to kind of be ready to be flexible and be also be able to quickly respond to proposals because we have such a good understanding of what we think works best for the site in that kind of bigger framework.
I was, I was just going to say, you know, we're obviously bumping up on 7 o'clock.
Right.
And we do want to try and keep that moving. You know, Ben and Mike will quite, I imagine we're probably, most likely going to get through this relatively quickly tonight, based on the three continuance requests that are before you. Christine and I would be happy if you guys wanted to come back and maybe just finish this conversation after the public hearings.
Well, I, I was thinking the other option is we could email questions to you.
Certainly whatever you.
Between now and tomorrow.
I don't have the benefit of your fabulous ideas by email.
We can share them. Yeah. Well, I.
Let's see how we do.
I, I'd say, why don't we adjourn this work session at this point? And as far as collective ideas, I, I think that's kind of an ongoing process anyway. So we can continue to have that dialogue.
And thank you for the multiple opportunities to look at this because it's a complicated project and it's, you see different things come out of it every time you look at it. Yeah, that's great, great.
Because it is complicated, I just don't want to see the applicant get scared away, you know?
Yeah, that's.
Because money tends to run away from that.
I know.
Thank you for your presentation.
City Commission.
Yeah, these are very telling.
But this is, I mean, I just took the pictures off the webs, my camera thing and printed them today. And had other issues I had to take care of, but I wanted to be sure to get here to say, and I will do that then.
When were those taken again?
Pardon?
When were those taken again?
February.
Okay, must have been a little more flowing today with all the hail and rain.
Well, actually, it slowed up when it stopped, when the weather, but this weather has been going big, small, then it grows again, and every time I walked it, there's been water in there.
Make sure you get the beaver again, because obviously Little Beaver Creek has beavers. We want to be very cognizant of that.
Well, I can even take pictures of it the year I took it, and all of a sudden, everything disappeared.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
I have a quick one for Tony. On the, when we do our flow for developments and stuff for water retention and all that, what's our standard? Is it a five-year or a 30-year or normal or?
To get back, they look at a couple of factors, the pre-development flow, and then they look at, I believe, the two-year and the five-year, or the two-year and the 10, and then you have to detain to a certain amount relative to the pre-development. I don't know what exactly, that's off the top of my head. We could certainly bring that back from our design, Stormwater Design Manual, what that standard is. But there are detention requirements that compare the pre-existing, pre-development condition to the post-development condition.
Right, okay. I just kind of wanted that out there, that it isn't just a well-built way.
No, not at all.
Requirements to keep the channel where it belongs and to keep things detained, detained and not just runoff.
Correct, yeah, and we're addressing both water quality and water quantity, so meaning the rate at which flows are released, but also, you know, addressing, how do you, essentially, you're taking water off of new streets and whatnot, and how do you deal with water quality, temperature, and et cetera, in this design of those storm ponds?
You don't turn the stream into an oily slick because it's runoff, yeah.
Correct.
What's the name of that park again?
Is it, I don't know, the official, it's Filbert Run Park. It was part of that Filbert Run Plan Unit Development.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the zone change at Central Point Road and White Lane, PC 14-025, ZC 13-03, and prior to proceeding with that, I am going to read the quasi-judicial hearing script and procedures as it relates to this item and the next two items. Public hearings on land use applications are scheduled tonight for this and two other items on the agenda. Staff, a staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedures, procedure steps are shown on the chart over on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your card, your address on the card, so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become a part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversight poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance should present additional, to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for consideration of the City Commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes action for damages in Circuit Court. And so we will now open the record for PC 14-23, or 25 and ZC 13-03. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, or any other statements to declare? And since the last hearing, has any commissioner visited the site?
Are we talking about 23 as opposed to 24?
This, this application that's 25, PC 14-.
Oh, the first one, okay.
25, the first one.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. None to declare.
Thank you, Commissioners, evening. This zone change came before you on January 27, 2014. The applicant, Venture Properties, has requested a continuance of the public hearing to the date certain of April 15, 2014, which will allow them time to modify their application and propose an R8 zone over the five parcels that are part of the application. As part of that request, they're also requesting a continuance of the City Commission hearing to the date certain of May 7, 2014, and they will be extending the 120-day for the length of the continuance to accommodate that request. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, although staff is requesting and recommending that we continue the public hearing with the record open to the date certain of April 15, 2014 for the next planning commission hearing on this matter.
I would so move.
Well, I have a question.
Right.
Just to clarify, they initially proposed an R6, which was allowable, but they now wish to modify it from R6, from R10 to R8 rather than R6.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, do we take testimony at this time? Do we have any cards filled out for this one?
We don't have anyone who submitted public comments.
Kathy Hogan, Central Point. Is that a Tuesday or a Monday? I think we think it's the 14th.
14th is a Monday. On the staff report, they put the 15th.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so just everybody needs to know, not come here Tuesday, nobody's here.
So we need to.
So the date should be the 14th.
We're all going to be doing our taxes that day, Kathy, anyway, on the 15th, so I won't be here.
I won't be here.
No, not on the 15th.
I'm working on mine right now. Thank you.
Any other public comments to be made?
I would again move that we continue the application.
Well, before we do that, I just wanted to make it on the record that I'm going to be absent that night, so I'm fine with us continuing it to that date, but I will be absent that day.
As will I.
Nobody else allowed to miss.
I'm not going to be gone.
I'm thinking about it.
It's called be there or be square.
That's right.
So we have a motion and a second to continue to.
No second.
I second it.
Oh, Tom's second.
April 14, 2014.
Commissioner Mabey.
Aye.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gile.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Sheriff Kidwell.
Aye.
Passes, thank you.
Is there a limit to the number of continuances a person can have? I mean, if they could keep requesting it, we can still keep honoring that? Not on this application, just a general question?
There's 180-day, but I think that's for.
There's some, there's a statutory extension period, and there's a case out of Newburgh that went to Luba.
Yes, I remember that.
Potentially longer.
Right, okay. I thought so. I remembered that from.
It's not indefinite.
Okay, good, good.
There is, I believe there's.
There isn't an evolution, yeah. We have to make a decision, okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, do I need to read the script again?
Oh, please no.
Thank you.
Nobody wanted to read the script?
Nobody leave or come in, just sit still.
Nobody came in.
I'll whisper it to them in your ear if they like. Take comment.
Oh, yes, so we're looking at the next item on the agendas. The Woodlawn Avenue Land Use Application requesting approval of a zone change from R10 Single Family to Dwelling District of R8 Single Family Dwelling. Does any of the commissioners have any ex parte contacts? Or have you visited the site since the last meeting?
Nope.
I haven't visited. I've driven past it a half a dozen times because I use Woodlawn as a pass-through.
No.
Darn you. So now the neighbors know who's creating all that extra traffic.
That's right.
After the meeting, I'll give them your plate so they can start some tracking.
So, no one has any.
No.
Anything to declare, okay?
Was he speeding? That's all.
It's just I drive down Woodlawn and I can see the site, so.
Did you adhere to the 25-mile?
Hold on.
All right.
I just outed you right here on film.
Okay, is there any staff report on this?
As you recall, the applicant originally submitted for a zone change from R10 to R6, came back and resubmitted with a zone change from R10 to R8. Since we met last time, the city staff has received additional public comment. It's before you, and so I'm entering it into the record as Exhibit 1. City staff has requested a continuance on this particular case to verify that we have adequate sewer capacity, and Tony can talk to you a little bit more about that.
The Public Works Department has been working for quite a while on updating the city's sanitary sewer master plan. The draft is approximately 50% completed, and when we received it from Ronan Caldwell, our consultant, who has been doing the flow monitoring and the modeling of our existing system as well as the future development assumptions that are in there. When we receive, when the Public Works Department received that 50% draft, it identified some existing sanitary sewer lines that were of concern, and so we are requesting a continuance of this zone change to make sure that we have a good handle on what the existing condition is and what the impact will be in the future. So this is new information that we received within the last couple of weeks, and so we are trying to get a complete understanding of exactly what's happening in a couple of these basins.
And the applicant's on board with the continuance as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's sufficient time within our 120-date.
I move that we continue.
Do they have any slips?
We are recommending for all of them tonight that we do take public comment for anybody who decided to come in tonight, and then we will.
Yes.
And so.
So before we move, we have to take comment.
Are we done with staff comments?
Just one final thing is that it's also April 14 as the continuance date.
Nice. Okay, any public comments? Anybody signed up to?
Ask Mr. Williams, and we'll go ahead, and we've got the three minutes on your screen so that you can see that.
My name's Steve Williams, and I live at 1065 Woodlawn, and I'll also represent my mother-in-law, who lives at 1075 Woodlawn, and is the most senior person along Woodlawn. She's been there since 1953. And there's a little bit of concern on our parts, not only with losing oak trees in the area and the habitat. We have a lot of wildlife that comes in through the back. A lot of it comes up from Kanema, including deer, and follow the so-called buffer zone along Coffee Creek, but also concerns about sidewalks that might come along supporting additional housing and also pouring more traffic onto Woodlawn, which right now is, I would say it's pretty easy to state that the average speed along there is probably 35 to 40. And I think that if we're going to put more traffic on Woodlawn, that we should see some additional ways to slow people down along Woodlawn. Really, you know, I know that the people that live at Clearbrook, you know, want to see any more traffic on their street, and they'd like to pour it on the Woodlawn instead. And they made a good, you know, stating of their case last time. But I'd just like to state our case, and, you know, I don't see any reason why. You know, people own their land. They should be able to make some profit from it eventually and use it in the way they'd like to, as long as it's legal. But, you know, I think there's a lot of people that could be affected adversely, not only by possibly additional monies into sidewalks, but also into your, you know, taxes and stuff, and what our property values might decrease. So there's some concern on that, you know, depending on the kind of housing that's put in there. And I think that's about all I have to say.
I have a question for you. When you talk about sidewalks, are you concerned that there wouldn't be sidewalks?
That there would be.
In like, in like a patchwork, like this block could have sidewalks, these wouldn't, or?
Actually, no. I don't, I really don't see the benefit, actually, myself. I walk, I walk a one-and-a-half-mile trip every day there in the mornings, and I do not have a problem with walking on the curbsides or parking strips. It doesn't bother me at all, and I can see where some people would like to have sidewalks. I understand that. But again, it's going to mean a lot of money to the homeowners that have been there for years, and some of the people are senior citizens on, you know, they're on fixed incomes. So that's, that's my concern. And actually, that doesn't really affect me totally because I have very little frontage.
So you're, you're thinking that because a new development would come in, they're going to be required to put, the other people are going to have to put sidewalks in? And that's, that's not going to happen?
That's not going to happen.
No, that the new development will have to put in sidewalks, but nobody's coming back to you to say, you have to put in sidewalks?
I saw something about, some people were talking about supported, you know, for the development in having the whole neighborhood kind of supported with sidewalks.
Well, you could have a, you could have a local improvement district where the neighbors all joined together and agreed to do that.
Yeah, but nobody's going to make you put in a sidewalk.
Unless you do that, usually the sidewalks are part of the new development.
Yeah, so if you sold your property and somebody else wanted to, like, put an addition in the, on the house, they may be required to put sidewalks in as part of that improvement. But you, there's nothing to force you to do it. Sometimes on a bigger development, the developer might come to you and say, I already have a sidewalk guy here, you know, for, you know, do you want sidewalks? Because I'm already here. There's a cost savings, that sort of stuff. But that's purely up to you. That's nothing that the city is doing.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
Ms. Kegel?
Hi, I'm Kathy Kegel. I live at 1072 Woodlawn Avenue in Oregon City. And I was concerned, like he said, about sidewalks, because I was like, whoa, really? Put in sidewalks? What, in this zone change, do you know how many new homes could be put in? Can you give me a?
I don't.
Number of how many?
I think it was like 22 under R6 and 14 under, but I don't, I don't know the number.
I'll have to get back to you on that one, but just to make it clear, the zone change doesn't include any development proposal to do any land division or build any homes that time.
So they're just wanting to change their zoning, and then later on down the line when they.
Get ready.
So they can sell off their property. Is that it, and then?
If they wanted to subdivide their property, they'd have to come back, and we'd resend notices out to neighbors, and there'd be opportunity for public comment to make sure that all the lots meet the mentions and stuff like that. But it wouldn't come back to the planning commission.
But there would be opportunity for you, all of you in the 300-foot radius. They've got the same notice. We'd get another notice saying, you know, they're going to, they want to develop the property, or they want to, even if they want to just subdivide it into different tax lots and not do anything about building, you would still get notice that there's going to be lots of little tax lots nearby to come and comment. So there's at least one, if not two, more opportunities to talk about whatever plans may come from it. By having a, an R8 instead of R10, the land just becomes more valuable to a prospective developer because it can be denser in his development. So it's just a way to improve the value of the land at this point.
Okay, so then, that's what I wanted to know. In dividing that, it's going to create, what, eight more pieces of property?
As she said, we don't know.
13 more pieces of property?
We don't know, because again, they have not submitted a proposal for development. 90% of the zone changes we get are a blanket. They don't come in and say, we're going to do this. It's usually happens down the road, so we don't know.
So, and then preserving places, like there is a little creek back in that area, so that just automatically gets preserved? Like.
Well, if it's in our natural resources overlay, then they're required to, to preserve it, and it can only build in a certain distance from it. They can't just bulldoze it and cover it and build a house on top of it. That's just not allowed anymore.
So this is including Woodlawn because they want it to come.
A part of the property is joint.
Joint Woodlawn.
Go out Woodlawn.
Well, no, part of the properties are a joint Woodlawn, so that's, you know, the five lots or four lots, one of, one or two of them actually touch Woodlawn, so that's why it's including Woodlawn. But whatever potential design or roadways, all that, that's all in the future, and we don't know for sure where that would go. It might go out Clearbrook, they might go out on Woodlawn, they might parallel all the way down and hit Warner Millie, but it's way too far for that, so I doubt that would be the case.
This application didn't show the division of lots. It just is asking for a zone change for the larger piece of property.
But to get an idea, what you can do is take the size of the parcel and divide it into 8,000, and you'll get a rough idea of how many lots will get out of it.
Minus.
Minus 20% for roads. And then whatever, whatever amount of property would be associated with the resource that they need to preserve as well.
Because when they subdivided, a portion of it will turn into street, street right away.
So that would be a way you could find out how many lots they could potentially drive out of the parcel.
Initially, this was brought in as, suggested as an R6, right? So that, do we remember how many homes that would be? So it would be just less than that? Okay.
I think there was just a chart.
I thought there was a question about it, but back then.
The traffic study talks about the difference between the number of homes you can get in R10 versus R8 and R6, but not the number of homes you can get if it were to be fully developed.
But you can find out the acreage of the tax lots. If it isn't in the earlier application, if you go to OZ web maps, you can click on the tax lot, and it'll say how many acres it is, and then just convert that to square feet and divide by 8,000, and it's a little bit math.
Take out the streets and.
Well. Divided by 20%, take the remainder.
We will leave you a card. You can give us a call.
Yeah.
Or you can call Tony.
Yeah, call Tony.
Um, there was one more question. Oh, will that then just pertain to those houses that we're talking about tonight? It wouldn't say there's another lot up the street that could be divided. It can't be divided?
No, this is only for the properties of that application, not anything else. If those other people want to do something, they have to come in with an application and, yeah.
Okay, I'm done. Thanks.
It's not a catch-all. Thank goodness.
Thank you.
Mr. Kegel?
All my comments have already been covered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
That's all that I have for this item that has submitted to speak.
Okay, Paul.
I move that we continue this item until April 14.
April 14.
Oh, sorry, Tom wants a second. I withdraw, I withdraw my second.
I'm just kidding.
It's a big moment.
It's a race now, you know.
That's right.
Commissioner Gile.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner McGriff. Commissioner Mabey.
Aye.
Mr. Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Sheriff Kidwell.
Aye.
See, who says this is not fun?
My drop time. Okay. And next, we have continued from last meeting, the PC 14-024, Portland Metro Men's Center, conditional use permit CU 13-01, and site plan and design review SP 13-11, and lot line abandonment LL 13-04. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications or bias or visits to the site since the last meeting that they need to declare?
I can declare that I have gone by the site probably three times since the last hearing because I have a friend that lives off South End Road, and I, of course, drove right by it. And then the only contact that I've had regarding this is with, I've had a brief discussion about the previous meeting with Commissioner Gile, because he was not able to be there.
And I went to the site today. I actually drove in behind. I wanted to see where the homes were and what. I'd not been to that site ever before in my life, so I wanted to see what we were looking at. So I drove into the lot, drove around the inside of the lot, and back out again.
In your discussion with Commissioner McGriff, was anything discussed about approving, denying?
No, I just didn't.
Decisions of approval?
No.
No, we did not discuss anything related to decision-making other than he asked about the hearing, and I said it was lengthy.
I have driven by the site because it's on my way either to or from along Woodlawn, for that matter. And I also had a comment, or I had a question from Steve Mays, the Oregonian, who just incidentally saw me and asked what had happened at the last meeting, why it wasn't continued. And I explained to him about the sewer issue that had come up, according to John. And then he asked, well, I heard something about neighborhood, good neighbor agreements. I said, yeah, it's all still up in the air. We haven't limited our, our, our public comment scope or anything, and it'll be the next, everything will be open for the next meeting. I said, good enough, and that was the extent of that conversation.
And you see, he's not here tonight.
Yeah.
Other commissioners?
Only in as much as I've driven by the site as well at the posted speed limit.
Bob?
Nothing.
Nothing, and I have nothing new to declare.
Would anyone in the audience, some of the audience like to come up to the dais and question any of the commissioners on what they've heard in terms of disclosures just now?
Okay, do we have a staff report?
We do have some, a packet before you on the dais, which are new items that have been entered to city staff since our last hearing. They'll be posted on the next planning commission agenda. We've also received a request for continuance. This continuance is also regarding the sewer issue and sewer capacity, and the continuance is until April 28. And we do have public comments signed up to speak as well.
Tony? I just gave Jennifer my packet from this meeting, the new information, and asked her if she would articulate about the process a little bit more so that there's a little clearer understanding, because I do understand where the writer of the letter is coming from, and it is hard to understand how this all goes and procedurally and why we have to do the things that we do in a certain way, so that's all legal and above board.
All right, um, thank you Chair Kidwell. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer Brager, City Attorney's Office, and I did have a chance to take a look at Paul Bell's comments submitted in relation to how the process works and as set forth in Chair Kidwell's disclosures and announcements at the beginning of the hearing, there is a process set forth in ORS one nine seven seven six three. And I encourage anyone who's interested in understanding the land use process in a little more depth than maybe it's summarized on the charts over here to take a look at that statute. Some of it is confusing legalese, but it does sort of step by step go through what happens in a land use decision-making quasi-judicial case like the one before you here. In, in land use, when you're an applicant, it's your burden to prove your case, and so in order to do that, you set forth your application and then as part of the statewide planning goals, goal one allows for due process as well as our state constitution or federal constitution. So everyone in the neighborhood who's been provided notice and any member of the public who may be read about it in the newspaper or saw it on the website is invited to come and testify, as some people have done already on items tonight, and bring forth their concerns to the city, to the decision-makers, hear the planning commission, and then potentially the city commission as well if there's a hearing before them. In that process, new information is maybe discovered by the applicant that makes them say, "Oh, you know, maybe I have to take a new look at this." And it's my burden to respond because I have to convince these decision-makers that it's okay to approve my project and that I meet the criteria and the code. And so to that end, the applicant is allowed to rebut at the very end of the process. At the last hearing on Teen Challenge, we had a very lengthy hearing and the applicant brought forth, you know, they brought their whole team here, as you've seen in other land use decisions, there's a lot of people who get involved to, to put together the project, and they didn't know how the hearing was going to turn out, but were, were prepared and asked the planning commission to make a presentation. And at that point, the planning commission said that they would agree to that position, and there are ways to ask the planning commission to do particular things, like at the beginning of Chair Kidwell's speech, he said that if you want to have a continuance based on your request to present new evidence, you can do that. And, um, as you'll recall, if you were at the very beginning of the Teen Challenge experience, that was, the first hearing was on the snow week, and some people already knew they weren't going to be able to make it but had really strong feelings, and they requested in writing a continuance, and that was granted. And that didn't have anything to do with the applicant, that was your neighbors or people in Oregon City who said, "Wait, I can't make it tonight, but I really, really want to comment." So that started the continuance process. And then at the last hearing, the commissioners agreed to hear from the applicant, the applicant took the dais and spoke, and now, or based on the decision at the last hearing, the planning commission said, "Okay, we understand there's some new information that's come up, and we're going to continue this hearing, and we're going to continue it and leave the record open," which means that people can still continue to testify. So all of the folks who had the opportunity to listen and hear what the applicant had to say are still able to testify either in writing or by presenting information at these public hearings, like we're having tonight, and could potentially have in the future if the planning commission follows the staff recommendation. So, at the end of all of this, the applicant will have, it's time to rebut because they do get the last word in the land use process. But like everything else, there's an appeals process that's set forth in the city code and in state statutes. So, um, I would encourage everyone to take a look at what their rights are, if that's something you're interested in, and, um, ask any other questions that you have about the process as it goes along to city staff, and as, as necessary, they'll ask the city attorney to chime in. Does that take care of your, your inquiry, Commissioner McGriff?
I think so. I will, I'm sure the proof of the pudding will be when Mr. Bell comes up.
All right.
He may have more questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last question. Does the public have a right to ask the applicant questions, or do they have to go through the chair, or...
Public, the public raises testimony to the planning commission, and so they can submit it in writing, or they can speak with you all, and, um, that's, that's the way the communication process works. There might be, there, some applicants are open to talking with neighbors at various times, and it just depends on what the application is and who the applicant is.
But it's a testimony process, not a debate, so when a person says something, you have another person come up and respond to that, another person come up, you know, with both sides of the applicant and the...
Right, no, it's not like...
It's not a debate, it's testimony, okay.
Yeah.
Remember, you're sitting in as a quasi-judicial hearing body, you're considering the evidence essentially as a judge would, if we disclose that... Make sure everybody has all the same information to hear, and make decisions based on the approval criteria that have been adopted in the municipal code or comprehensive planner by state ordinance.
Right, and, and as, as planning commissioners, if the public has raised an issue that we consider to be a concern that needs to be addressed by the applicant, we certainly have the opportunity to ask the applicant to address that particular concern. So even though the public can't talk directly to the applicant, we can, we can talk on their behalf.
Well, that was brought up in one of the correspondence that I noticed.
Right, so, you know, we, we represent the public, so we have an opportunity to ask the applicant a question that, that was raised by the public that is worthy to be addressed. Okay, any other staff information? So we are requesting a continuance to April twenty-eighth.
With public testimony.
And we, we have people signed up for public testimony?
First off, I'm not sure if the applicant's representative wanted to speak. We, we have had discussions with them and about the continuance request.
Does the applicant want to speak first? Okay, so we'll take public testimony.
The one sheet that I have is for Mr. Bell.
Did write, my, uh, my name's Paul Bell, I own the property at four twenty-seven Warner Parrot Road, and, um, I wanted to continue some reflections that I had since the last proceedings and would like to make a couple of observations. Mr. Kidwell said that if we had another hearing, it would be new ground, not plowing the old ground. Um, you have my comments in front of you, I think. Would you rather I didn't read them?
No, you're, you're welcome, and, and that was only a suggestion.
Well, I, I didn't mean to stir up a hornet's nest.
No, not at all.
Uh, number, observation number one, I felt frustrated by the procedural format of the meeting per se. The applicant was allowed to make in effect a final closing statement, leaving a strong and overwhelming impression in the minds of the commissioners for their case. No cross-questioning from the community was allowed for. Objections previously stated that the microphone were simply dismissed out of hand by asserting that citizens were simply misinformed, irrelevant, or based on unwarranted fears. This hardly seems anything like a due process to me. Is the procedural format actually demanded by specific statute law, or is it merely convention, how we normally do it? This might warrant legal review by the city. Personally, I would like to be able to respond to accusations that my objections and those of others were completely without merit. Observation two, I think it was clear and obvious to all who attended the last meeting that citizens and commissioners were being outmaneuvered by a very skilled lawyer. I appeal to common sense and urge you to do the same. Let me give you a specific example. It was brought up in the discussion that density is not spelled out in the zoning ordinance and that density was not a condition of the permit being applied for, therefore, density cannot be a consideration. In other words, since you didn't legally make it an issue before, you can't legally make it an issue now. This could be a good script for a Hollywood movie. Hence, density issues do not exist, but they do exist. Common sense and right reason inform our mind and conscience that density issues are of genuine concern. A dormitory for sixty-two persons in the middle of a designated single-family home residential neighborhood is in fact a real issue. The law is being used to outmaneuver common sense. Everybody knows that density is an issue, even if the lawyers say otherwise. Observation three, much of the discussion was tangled up in semantics. Words and definitions were sliding back and forth. Recovering addicts, many with felony records, are relabeled as disabled persons, who of course would discriminate against a poor disabled person. A dormitory becomes a group home, as if we're just merely talking about a house. And since treatment centers need licensing and regulation, we shifted to talking about a recovery center, et cetera. Observation four, it is confusing to know whether or not Teen Challenge is applying for a CUP, conditional use permit, as a regular applicant, straight up, or as a religious institution. Their answers indicate that they are applying both sides of the fence, or street, depending on which one seems most advantageous. During the last meeting, we were reminded by the city that only, that the only criti- criterion in which to judge the CUP issue was strictly related to the approved data that had been listed on the screen. Yet, when the issue of density was raised, the lawyer for Teen Challenge made a big point of them being a religious five oh one, three C, tax-exempt status organization. As a religious organization, they don't have to request residency, since the law already allows for group homes in a religious context. This is far afield from what our founding fathers originally intended. It can be seen as a classic example of the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law by way of intent. For example, Catholic nuns and women of church service could reside in a convent. Priests and men of church service could live in the monasteries. These were considered group homes. Protestant churches were often accompanied by a parsonage or manse for a pastor and/or family. Group homes were intended to accommodate nuns, priests, and pastors. Now, the definition of group home is being stretched to include sixty drug addicts, many with felony records, under the voluntary compliance of two counselors on site. On a personal level, I believe that churches, religious organizations, nonprofits, and the like must all abide by the same set of rules that all must follow. A dormitory for sixty-two persons in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood is out of keeping with the surrounding area. I listened to your common sense and conscience, and I would request you to say no respectfully and sincerely, Paul Bell. I'm, uh, my first comments or my observation, in a sense, this is, this is not a trial, but it is, it is a court of public opinion, you know. I felt that my objections were not dealt with fairly. The applicant has the burden of proof, but surely it would behoove someone who had the burden of proof to remove all objections rather than just to dismiss them. A dismissal of the objections is not really a rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I just, I just want to assure you that I, I hope, I'm sorry, I want to assure you that I hope that what Jennifer had to say was a little more clarity about how the hearing process operates, but as far as myself as a planning commissioner, I take very seriously the testimony of the public members of our community, and I don't dismiss it outhand, and I assure you that I am not going to be misled or bamboozled by any attorneys.
I'm just one man.
I understand.
And I have just one opinion, but I do feel strongly that ironically, I am a conservative and evangelical Christian, and this is a ministry that I would support. I just don't feel it's appropriate here. That, that really is the issue. And I do think that the density issue does need to be addressed. It does seem to me in the final analysis that a dormitory for sixty-two persons is out of keeping with the R ten zoning. Can I say something else, or am I time up?
Long time ago, but go ahead.
I mean, you know, the fact that you came here...
I can, I can give you, I was trying to think of an example, like a sermon illustration.
Is this a homily?
You know, we have separation of church and state, so...
Suppose, suppose a couple wants to retire and they, they buy a beautiful lakefront property, and they pay an exorbitant amount for that property because it's lakefront, right? And they get up one morning to make their coffee and look out at the lake and see that the water is gone. And sure enough, there it is in some fine print eighteen ninety-three that, that the water rights belong to a municipality ten miles downstream or a mining company. Nobody's ever really looked at it that closely. And that's an example of being blindsided. I guess I feel a little bit blindsided by this process. I bought a single-family residential home on an R ten property that was for ten thousand square feet or more. I paid more so that I could get more space between me and my neighbor and a little more privacy. And now, I look out and the water is gone. So it is a concern to me, I feel that it affects my property values and my ability to resell the property, and I feel that the neighbors pretty much all feel the same way. And I think that that should be considered, and it is upon you and your responsibility. And I leave it with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just for all of those in the audience and anyone watching on the, the TV, as I stated earlier, we, we are volunteers representing the community here. So we are taking the public testimony seriously, we don't dismiss it, and we, we do pay attention. And just for what it's worth, this is, this is the paper that we received just on this one, one issue. So we're, and, and I, I know the other commissioners are taking a lot of time to wade through the material, and I know Tom, he, he was absent last time because of eye surgery, he took the time to watch the whole last session on the video. So we, we all do take this very seriously and, and we're really trying to weigh this out in, in the best possible manner.
We, we appreciate the fact that you took the time to come because that's important. I've been at many a hearing where, wearing my citizen hat, I've been the only one there. And that's okay, you know? That's what, that's what you need to do. If you feel strongly about something or you have an opinion about it, that's what the process is. And so I, I just want to say again, I appreciate the fact that every single person that packed that, that Pioneer Community Center, each and every one of those people, what they said was important, and I took copious notes.
Yes.
That I can go back and refer to what people said.
Yes.
Because I'm not dismissing it out of hand.
And if I could add to that, I come to this position from four years on the CIC, which is Citizens Involvement Council. Both Damon and I have been, been on that council, I was chair for, for three years, I think you were one. And we regularly listen to residents and neighborhood associations about their concerns and growth, and so we're really up with knowing what, that listening to residents and neighbors, neighborhoods is what's really important to our city, a part of goal five, listening to all of you.
Goal one, goal five is the historic resources.
Sorry.
All of our citizens are historic. They've been here for more than a day.
That's, that's right.
Do you have any other requests for public speaking? I guess it'd be up, if the applicant wanted to rebut.
Does the applicant have anything to say at this time?
We'll hold our comments until...
Okay. Okay, so we have a, uh, request for continuance, do we have a motion?
Okay, Bob, it's you and me this time. I move we continue this to...
April twenty eighth.
April twenty eighth.
What do you want me to say?
Second.
Second.
All right, everybody got a turn.
Commissioner Guile.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe.
Aye.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Mr. Mahoney.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Okay, so April twenty eighth is...
April twenty eighth.
Hopefully the final meeting with us.
So, uh, next item on our agenda is communications. Tony, do we have any communications tonight?
Um, just, an update, uh, we had the, uh, the Keene event, uh, last Thursday, that was very well-received up in, up in Portland. Keene headquarters, celebrating the Lemon Falls Legacy Project champion building and introducing the plan. The mayor, uh, Councilor Collette, uh, the county administrator spoke, as well as Mike Zylas from Walker Macy gave a short presentation. It was actually, you know, very well-received, um, so we had, uh, Lemon Falls TV was there, they did tape it, so hopefully we'll get some editing put together, put that up on the website for those who weren't able to attend, and just memorialize the event.
We asked for the swag, remember? I'm just putting that on the record again. I, I told Christina we wanted swag.
All right, we will find some swag.
That's what you asked for.
Yeah. Eclipse Development, uh, and the Shop Off Group, uh, so they're out of Southern California, have, uh, submitted a letter of intent with the bankruptcy trustee, so...
So I thought Eclipse went away.
They did, but they are partnered with Shop Off, so they went and formed another partnership.
Okay, all right.
Um, and have come back to have a look at the property again.
That was not reported in the Oregonian, you know?
It's mainly the Shop, the Shop Off Group who's...
Shop Off?
Shop Off, yeah.
S-H-O-P?
O-F-F, one word.
O-F-F, oh boy.
Shop Off Group, yes. So, similar to the previous process, letter of intent goes to the bankruptcy trustee, or the bankruptcy judge, um, probably be an overbid process. So, you know, we're still kind of in a little bit of waiting period here until some of the, regulatory requirements are addressed. And so, um, and as you saw in our work session tonight, we are still moving forward towards trying to have a planning commission hearing, first planning commission on this hearing on April twenty first, so that will be a special hearing night. It will not be the second or the fourth, it'll be the third, I believe, Monday of the month. So just a little note.
There would be a hearing April twenty first and April twenty second to hear the...
No, no, it'll be the fourteenth, is when we continue, then we'll have one on the twenty first, and then we'll have one on the twenty eighth.
Okay.
So we just have that odd meeting in there for specifically the Lemon Falls, so that we have sufficient time to start working through it.
Kim's staff is going to be at the library on the twenty four, twenty first.
Uh-oh. So...
Do we, do we have items on the agenda for, uh, two weeks from today?
Of course.
Yes. The next few months, yes.
Everything's getting continued, so we're like backing up.
We're booked, okay.
We're booked.
That means people are building.
Anything else, Tony?
No, that doesn't mean people are building, that just means people are filing applications. I wish it meant people were building.
On March, March twenty fourth, we are bringing back the sign code for a work session.
And that's a six o'clock?
Okay. Anything else?
So is, is Shop Off a suburban-type developer as well? Or, I heard something about they'd buy distressed properties, or that's their thing, or something to that effect?
Yeah, I think that they, they do invest in high-risk depressed properties, um, so I would invite folks to go to their website and have a look.
Anything else?
Jennifer, since we sit as a quasi-judicial board, when do we get our robes?
Talk to the guy in charge of swag.
Feel free to wear your bathrobe, Bob, anytime, yeah. Come on down.
I want the white wig.
That's not a pretty sight.
White wigs and black robes.
No, no thanks.
Okay, well, uh, are we prepared to adjourn?
Is this, is this a world record?
Wow.
Yes.
Second.
We are adjourned.
All right, that's the record now, eight...